You're wrong.
Workshop of whatever today is.
Twenty-three October.
Twenty-three.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty, twenty-three October twenty nineteen. Thank you. I guess the first thing I will say is we've received Donovan's resignation from our board due to other issues and family matters, which really take a priority and demand his time and attention. So we accept it with regret. I know you have some things on your mind, but what that brings forward is we have down two new, two board members. I did hear from Jennifer. And with Tom Cash's resignation, she said to me, well, Dennis will be moved up and take Tom's place. So we will be looking for a new associate member. I have a question for clarification. Ken, does that mean he goes into Tom's position as well?
Position as vice chair or that?
As vice chair.
No, I don't think so. I think the board would vote at a regular meeting and will, we have an interim vice chair, so at that point we just vote a permanent vice chair till elections in November, January, or something like that. But I do believe he follows into Tom's date of expiration appointment. I think so, that works, but Jennifer will be on top of that one.
Right.
So Dennis essentially becomes officially a permanent member.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we're still too short after I leave.
One short.
When she accepted her resignation, I wasn't going to.
Well, I tried to throw it in the waste basket.
We'll be too short. We'll have to replace you.
I have to still replace.
Two alternates.
Two alternates.
Yep.
That is the one thing about our board that I'm, I think we're very fortunate with a five-member board and everyone here really, which I appreciate greatly, takes their position very seriously and, you know, gives their all to being here. Every now and then a work schedule might interfere, but for the most part, everyone's here all the time, which is, we're quite fortunate. I had given you a couple of names of people, which I'm not going to name publicly at this point. And.
I think I'd just encourage anybody that you run into that may be interested to show up a meeting and, or now you can watch it on TV so they know what they're getting themselves into, you know, have somebody get a man, get him appointed, and then they realize, as we were talking in the last meeting, we are meeting every week and we're almost contemplating two meetings a week sometimes, or say if we were to expand the Thursday night meeting, we're already doing the Thursday and Wednesday, so it could be two meetings a week. And it's a big commitment. And at the end of the day, you're dealing with a lot of laws and legal issues and things like that, so some people may not want, they may want a joint to help, but then realize, my decision, we could all end up in court or something like that.
Exactly.
They may not want to be that involved, so.
Right. So on that note, if anybody else on the board, Dawn including you and your circle that you might know.
That's how I got here.
Yeah, yeah. Eagles Grace is a great resource for people that want to volunteer and help.
Yeah, exactly. But anyway, that's, there we go. So we all brought, what we thought were good books for today.
Yep.
And you have the list.
My list of things I've been hoping to add.
Yeah.
Just update, we did receive the preliminary application for the Youngsbridge Road subdivision, so there's a lot of test bit data that goes with that, but we had that in the other applications and some deeds and things like that, so I didn't make copies of all that stuff out there as well, too. So we've got that. And they're working on the new subdivision applications, going down through the checklist aspect of it. And I think just at the next meeting, we'll continue on while we start making our checklist and just continue on and checking things off or circling them for more information. However, that works there. Is that all you have? Do you want to head to zoning?
Yeah, I, I didn't know if we wanted to bring up some of Wilson Lake's points at our next meeting.
We've got a lot of letters that have come in. I've only put one in your box there. I mean, that'll be up for the board or I would imagine at public hearing, they're welcome to come and state their opinions.
Fine with me, good.
Which we get to there, so I mean, I've got dozens of letters.
That's right.
Can we move on from the application? This is the second stage of the application process.
Preliminary plan application.
So it's past the sketch plan?
He's given that application to us. The board would need to review that sketch plan, make sure everything's completed, that what you guys want, and then we can move that, so we don't have to accept the preliminary. He's just giving it to us. Clock's picking on his side.
Oh, sure.
Okay, I think we have to finish checking off that preliminary plan. There were a few questions.
Yeah.
That we had, and it might have been on those things we had before that.
Yeah. I think on the sketch.
The test bits.
Yeah, yeah.
It might have been. And on the, we had two or three questions on the, on the sketch plan.
Yeah.
We go over those at the meeting.
Yeah.
We accept or we don't accept.
Just a sketch and then?
On the sketch.
Yeah.
And then we move on to the preliminary.
And once we accept preliminary, that's when we would notify the others.
Others, yeah.
The schedule book here.
And we.
That would be down the road.
That may always work.
Still down the road a little, yeah. But other than that, I think any other discussion about this belongs at the full board meeting.
Yep.
Not here.
Yep, no, basically I just wanted to give you guys what I have.
That's, that's perfect. Okay, on to zoning.
Any changes? So one of the other things that keep popping up now are short-term rentals, especially in the shoreline zone. We've always had people rent the cabins, cottages, they're all houses now, for a week at a time. The problem we're seeing is the daily rentals. People are just renting it out on air, you know, for one day at a time. And you're seeing the turnover, people coming in late at night, leaving early in the morning. Basically, it's just a potty stop for them, and we're getting a lot of complaints from different neighbors and things like that. So that's something when we get the full board together to just see if it's something we want to look at, especially in the shoreline zone, treat it commercial, short-term, or don't worry about it.
Yeah, I don't know how, whatever, regular or something like that.
Well, you'd have to have everybody register their rental units or something like that, short-term rental, and it would depend if the board had a concern of somebody renting a place out for a month. I mean, we don't care if somebody rents a place for a year, you know, renting permanent renters, those, that's usually not an issue. And we're seeing this all over. You're seeing it in the newspaper, on the news, it's becoming an issue everywhere, and every town's trying to, someone ignore it, not get into everybody's little bit of business there is, but it's not going away. It's just becoming.
There's, was it Winnebago Saki, somewhere on Winnebago Saki, that it's becoming a, maybe, could be Wolf Row, it's becoming a real issue.
Yeah.
There, B and Bs. And I know the selectmen are involved.
Yeah.
With that, and it's really, but the things to remember are if it's commercial, you know, wait a minute, is this a zoning change or, you know, wording will become, you know, verbiage will become.
And a lot of it is, they're not renting the whole place out, they're renting a room out.
Right.
Or a couple of rooms, and the people are still laying, they live, living there. Or they're dividing the house and allowing them to rent the basement and there are stairs.
Right.
So at that point now, we've got basically a two-family with no fire separation, no smoke detectors, egress is our main concern. Plane of board would be concerned with parking requirements, disposal of the trash, septic sewage, things like that, so something to think about.
And Airbnb is quite different from having your brother-in-law living with you and paying your room in order, you know, it's a much different situation.
A lot of towns are looking at their short-term rental and using the word "family," which makes it impossible to enforce. And it's the last thing we want to do is go around checking who's living there.
Much different.
It's a permitted use or it's not a permitted use.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we try to ignore as much as we can.
So just something to think about.
Contracty ads, we talked about that a little bit before.
Right.
So basically, and a few towns have them out there, we're looking for something that we could call a permitted use in several zones, probably not shoreline zoning. Home occupation is a business that when you drive by, you can't tell there's a business there except for a sign out front. Somebody does your taxes, maybe cut your hair, things like that. So home occupation's a permitted use, but when it becomes bigger that you can see outside, and it's, it's always been, the contractors have always triggered this exterior expansion because they've got so much stuff, whether it's excavation, concrete guys, firewood businesses, things like that. So we haven't, we've had discussion with some of the people to try to keep it neat and orderly till we could get a permitting process through place. And if we don't get a permitting process through place, then it would be, they're basically in violation because it's not a permitted use.
Even the guy who has his auto repair shop.
Auto, well, auto repair shop would be automotive repair, so we have that as a permitted use or in certain zones.
In certain zones.
Yeah.
What is the, and I don't remember who, it was in the ZOMA, it was in the comprehensive plan. Somewhere in there, it even goes to the extent where if you have a dumpster on your property, you're supposed to have it fenced so that you can't see it from the world.
Probably good neighbor policy or under site plan review or something like that. You see that in a lot of commercial places where they made up with the dumpster in and it's all fenced in, first thing, the gates are all busted and falling apart, you know, they can't, they don't maintain it and things like that. Snow removal is usually a big deal with those as well, too.
So this stuff will come under that, Ken? Under the neighborhood policy?
I don't have it as a permitted use in the land use chart. And my first initial thought would be it'd be a permitted use in all zones except for shoreline and RP, the last B. I mean, that would be more of a permitted use or not permitted use. And then whether it's just a permit through our office so they don't need to go to plane of board review. A lot of the towns that have it, the verbiage is neat and orderly, and I hate to be the judgment of neat and orderly because.
It's all deception.
It's exactly, I mean, we've got one junkyard that has hundreds of pallets, and then we've got one place where they've got the same amount of pallets, but it's neat and orderly and all cut up, and they're going to use it for firewood. It's the same, same issue somewhat, but one looks horrible, in my opinion, and the others all sort out neat and orderly, so I'd rather have some better, stronger verbiage that, you know, it's a permitted use, keep it out of sight, keep it, you know, the ground from being contaminated. And it's just a trigger of how many employees you got, under ten or something like that, parking for them, house operations. As long as the neighbors aren't complaining, then in general, then we haven't had a tremendous, we, we've got two or three that we're getting complaints on, and we're just trying to drag it out till we can call it a permitted use and write them permits. Otherwise, we've got to tell them to, and as we've spoke to the individuals, they tell us their operation is run from a different location. They just happen to bring their trucks and all this stuff home and it stays there forever, so.
Right.
You know? And we're backed up enough that it's not our biggest problem, but when you're complaining about something, the complaint didn't want us to deal with, this is the only problem we have. This is the only thing we have in town to deal with. And when it doesn't get handled for months at a time, then they feel we've been ignoring them, and I mean, it'd be great if it was, A, a permitted use, and B, these are the standards to meet. And then the board can figure out if it's something you guys want to deal with or just, but it's fine how it is, but.
But with the variety of what you've got to deal with is vast.
Yeah.
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 Well, the other thing I can think to is, you have even 10 employees, and they all bring their trucks home, say.
Yeah.
To your home, not to there, but to your home, at night. I am going to bed. Everybody's going to be looking for a bathroom.
No, yeah, I mean, if you've got 10 employees, you've probably got a good little office situation.
Sure, but if the office is, is that spare room at the end of your house.
Yeah.
Which is septic doing.
Yeah.
With now 12 or 14 people using it every day.
Yeah.
And that's what's happening. And I think it's a big kettle of fish, and we have to really, one fish at a time.
I think.
See what happens.
Level one, level two, level three. Level one, small amount of stuff, two or three employees.
Right.
We write the permit, get out of here. Level two, under 10 employees.
I agree with that.
So many square foot of parking area surface disturbed and things like that. Obviously, the big thing's going to be the excavation guys. They've got a ton of stuff. They love to bring home pre-dur, they got to bring it some way as process and screen it. And most of the excavation guys we have in town, we're not getting any real complaints on them. They're not out there running the screener on Sunday and changing motors and oil all over the ground, stuff like that.
Yeah.
So our opinion, our office's opinion is, let's figure a way to make it a permitted use and then we don't have to worry about it.
Put up a 12-foot privacy fence and.
Yeah, yeah.
All in a day. But then we can't see anything either. Question, with a home business.
Home occupation?
Home occupation.
Yeah.
Say it's, okay, so you, you do tailoring at home, you do bookkeeping.
Yeah.
But say you don't do that, say you go outside of the home to do your business. Is a sign permitted at your home for that business? I cut trees. Can I put a sign in front of my house? You know, Joyce is tree cutting.
Well, if you have a tree cutting business, you probably have two or three chippers, a couple of trucks, trailer chippers, a little truck.
Yeah, but can the, can the sign go in front of my house? Say I have that somewhere else.
Yeah, and it's just, I wouldn't have a problem with that. The one we got the other day for clarification was, she does home care, so she doesn't do it in her own home, she goes to other people's houses and does home care, and we're like, yeah, that's fine. There's nothing related to your house, maybe you're getting your bills and billing out and things like that. As long as it's not the shoreline zone, then that's a permitted use, it would be no permits required. It's just a level of activity coming into your house.
As long as you're not shoreline.
Shoreline home occupation is conditionally used to plant wood.
Right.
Even put the sign.
The sign would trigger that you've got a home occupation going in. We had one was a barber shop in the shoreline zone.
No, I mean, if like she was saying, Kenny, you didn't do any to see your house.
I would say to put the sign up, you're running the business out of your house, and that's where payroll is done, phone calls come in, employees.
May or may not drop out.
FedEx is dropping off stuff. I mean, if you want the sign, that's where the business is run out. If you have a location on 109 somewheres and that, that's your main thing and that's your house there, you probably don't need the sign in your house, you probably don't want the sign in your house because you've got your business somewheres else.
Right, right.
Keep the, keep the two separated, you know? We're good with our thoughts with that?
Yes.
Just to keep thinking as our clock ticks to.
Yeah.
What we want to put forward is zoning amendments this year. Docks was the other thing we talked about last year a little bit.
Yeah.
I think personally that we ought to get out of the dock business completely.
I had a gentleman with a couple of bobcats and a backhoe in the lake Tuesday below the high water mark and mucking it out, and it's one of those coves that a lot of mac lotta weeds and things, so I understand exactly why you didn't have any permitting for it. Below that high water, we were scratching to find ordinances that gave us any jurisdiction whatsoever, just to, to help navigate through the DEP process, and we don't have a lot.
No.
You know, so. A lot of town, I think Shapley got out of the dock stuff last year or the year before as well, too. The state finally had opened the window and said, you can give it out of your ordinance. I wish the state had better standards. New Hampshire, the dock permits all go through, town clerk, conservation goes through the state, comes back through, and they have good guidelines. You have this much frontage, you get this big a dock, you got to keep it so far away from your butters, and it's, it's clean and simple. No enforcement, but there's a permitting process, but.
So there are standards that must be met.
Yes.
That should be met.
Yeah.
But with that being said, I kind of look at it, something like the forestry stuff. These people would go through the state to get their permits, to do whatever they've got to do, and we wouldn't care about it, and quite often till after it was all done and over, and I would think the same thing would be the same type of deal, Ken, you know, with the docks. I mean, you got to get a permit from DEP to put these, it's supposed to.
No, no permits for any docks.
No permits from DEP.
It's a temporary structure. You're supposed to put it in during, and I've had a couple of conversations with the commissioner of the DEP, the wording should be during the non-voting season. I think it says eight months or something like that. So when you've got these permanent dock people, you know, they think it's fun to pull it out for a day in July and put it back in, the clock stops, all over. It should say during the non-voting season, you blow all your temporary docks out, get them all out, then you're all set. But as I've had some discussion with some of the lake associations, they're starting to complain about the pink flamingos. It's as big as this room here. You blow it up with the air and float it around. Then there's the trampolines with the slides, there's all these big blow-up things that are offshore. Our ordinance says permitting of permanent or floating, it's conditionally used to plant wood. And then this has come up about 15, 20 years ago, there was a swim raft about 200 feet off the shore, the whole neighborhood was complaining about it. And, but, you know, it's 200 feet off shore, all inland fisheries and wildlife.
But I don't, I don't see how logically we can, the code force can, can deal with docks in this time.
No.
There's no enforcement.
What do you do?
Yeah, you would have to drive around, tag every single one of them. First tag I would do would be when there was ice in the lake, saying, obviously, this is not temporary, it's here all winter, so, you know, but it would be a huge.
And I can see you'd have to have one hotline on your phone every day, they put a flamingo up, they put a.
Well, as soon as somebody.
On an island.
As soon as somebody was told they couldn't have what they have and voluntarily removed it, they're going to tell about everybody else. What about him, what about him, how can they, you know, he's got two.
Right.
Now, who enforces taking the dock side of the little?
We've had a couple of permanent ones. If it's permanent, built in the lake, we send them a letter. And then they tell us how temporary it is, and we'll monitor it during the winter.
But I mean, but by what authority would ever know what it says they have to take in our roof?
Permanent or floating requires plane of board review. A condition use permit.
But once again, okay, I mean, you can't go around the lake. I mean, how many docks have got a condition use there?
None.
So. You've got no record of any of the docks.
So usually when somebody comes in and wants to replace it, we'll go out and do a site visit. If it's pressure-treated, well, it's only 25, 30 years old, tops. So it doesn't go back far enough for the ordinance, so it's already been replaced, it's not legally existing. Occasionally, we'll see a dock that it's oak, it's timber, it's rotted, it's concrete or something like that, you can clearly see with that moss, this thing's been here forever. Now that, that definitely opens the door. I know we were on one dock that was large, permanent, been there a while, and I was looking at it as a non-conforming structure, 30% expansion, all types of things. The DEP said, no, that's a, that's not non-conforming, that can be there. That thought of that, so. But I would go through a relocation process, things like that. So as soon as it's onshore, it's a deck, and that's one of the other things we'll have is somebody had a 16 by 16 deck on the water, and we're like, hey, got to get it out of there. Next thing I know, it's out at the end of the dock. So you have the dock, and it goes 16 by 16, all types of chairs and things like that. As the plane of board keeps moving these houses back and we keep revegetating the shoreline, the cluster is going out into the lake. And it's that beautiful aluminum-colored stainless steel, the sunbeats right on it and shines in it, it sticks up, so it's something that, you know, we can go around, take a look at, and maybe look at Rangeli Naples, some of these inland ones. Docks are a huge deal on the ocean. You know, the tide, floating, folding in leaves, setting, when you pull it in, there's the vegetation you're going to kill and things like that, so.
I don't know, I just think that the way it was set up now is dock thing is in restriction, which is almost impossible.
Yeah, 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 it's not strong enough. The biggest problem we have, complaints that we'll get from individuals, is so-and-so came up, put his dock right on the property line, and then puts his potty barge on the side of that, and that's in front of somebody's property. Not a big deal if you've got 200 feet of frontage, but most people are 50 to 100 in that 10-foot wide patio up.
Dock?
No, the, the potty barge, if you've got 50 foot of frontage and they just park 10 feet in front of you, that's an issue. So our best recommendation, we can say, is make sure your dock's up for us next year. We're rich on the property line. And that has worked. We had one individual that spent a little over $50,000 in court over that, over that issue. And it had gone, it was pretty quiet for a couple of years, and the kids got out late to put their dock out this year, and because they thought everything was all settled, then the plaintiff, the defendant got their dock out early this year, so.
I mean, all of this, I, I look at as just somebody that like riding canoe, I don't like to jet ski, you know, on the lake. Anybody's canoe on the lake, when those guys go by, you don't know where you're going back.
Yeah, the dock boats, too.
So what I'm saying is, originally, we had these small boats, canoes, people out there fishing and sailboat and whatever they was doing. As time's going on, it's changed to the jet skis and the skiing boats and the potty boats, and.
Fishing boat, the ski boat, the wake boat.
And the ones that, at this time, were losing what they had, and the ones that are this time are now losing what they had. And, I mean, I just.
You know, it's, it's one of the things, the, it's like peeling an onion. When I got my boat, and I've got a powerful boat, I'm on a small lake, but I.
It's a good-sized lake.
Yeah, but, you know, it's powerful, about 255 horsepower engine. I have five kayaks, one canoe. I have five kayaks, one canoe. When I got the boat, it's an inboard aisle. When I got the boat, first thing I did for insurance is I took a Coast Guard boat owner class. One of the basic rules, you've got the power. Anything around you that doesn't have power has to ride away. I see you coming along, kayak or canoe or rowboat, I have to cut my speed.
Well, that's a nice choice for somebody like you that would do that.
Well...
But being a victim out there before.
Oh, I know. Even with my boat, I've had jet skis come by me thinking it was funny. They didn't, they didn't take me over, but everybody in the boat was soaking wet because they just pulled that turn. And isn't it funny?
So that goes with what he said earlier about restrictions are unenforceable.
They are unenforceable.
Although you've seen some lakes, like at Wind Maseki, there's a no wait rule.
Oh, yeah.
Coming out four ways and it seems, from what I've seen, everybody's faced the role, who enforcement?
Or Wind Maseki, you've got heavy enforcement out there, marine patrol, multiple different agencies. A lot of, um, towns have their own police boats and things like that. Here we'll have an occasional inland fishery and wildlife that will just take a little amount of time and stop it on shore. They've been on a lot of area to cover.
So the only enforcement would be in order?
Yeah. And, and I'll tell you this, because I, Lake Association, the minute the warden's on the lake, we get email, we get text message, warden's are up today. So everybody who's fishing without a license, they scatter.
Do you get the same text message when I go out?
And nobody actually knows you, you don't wear green.
We're undercover.
You don't wear green, you're undercover.
Well, we're after related anyways.
Yeah, but there is no enforcement. So how much energy do we want to put into this?
Well, we do, like I said, I bet you to, to research and go and gather the information input along the computer. I bet you can take some idea.
Yeah.
Take some time for sure.
Because basically, the, the ordinance we have now, every single waterfront person, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent are currently violation.
Yeah.
Of something.
Of the dockal ordinance. And it's funny because the state will tell us that, um, tourism is their number one industry. The water quality of the lake is why people are coming here, the natural vegetation, this is what they come here for. But yet, when they move from away, those people from away want patios, retaining walls, big huge docks. So it's a double-edged sword. You say they're coming here for the natural beauty, but yet they want patios, retaining walls, a big huge dock. So if you allow them to have it, they're still going to come and they're probably even pay more for what they get.
Yeah.
Which they are.
Which they are. Because that's what they, they'll pay it right down there if they can. Education's coming a long ways. People understand water quality, algae blooms, the lakes are getting closer with the cyanic bacteria. They're getting closer and closer. It's not a lake way down south anymore, it's within ten miles. You can find that cyanic bacteria blooms and we've had any in town this year.
I mean, Milfoyle was probably the best education that a lot of people got.
And a lot of people get confused with invasive species and water quality.
Right.
Invasive species grow in a beautiful lake.
Yeah.
You know, it's just like...
But they'll eat your lake up.
Yeah, and your budget.
And your budget. I mean, Sevego has lost acres to Milfoyle.
Yeah. I know Balch and a few other lakes around here, they have a barge with divers, they dive every weekend. They're down there plucking it, get sucked up to a pump up to the top of the barge. You can't kill the stuff, it'll live years and years and years, I believe.
We, we have divers on square who harvest...
You've got the muscle problem.
They, snails.
Yeah.
Snails. And we have divers that go out and, and harvest snails.
Burner laser?
Actually, I'm not sure whether they get rid of them. But I personally have been asked by some, um, Asian restaurants if they could buy, because they are edible. I'm not sure, but there's a huge market for it, but there's some restaurants in Portland that, uh, they're green snails that, you know. But, um, you know, the other thing to...
Anything about that.
Hmm?
You know someone saying anything about that?
Well...
He lives downstream.
Yeah, you know, the, but don't forget, we're pushing people back from the water. Because we don't want anything without a hundred feet. So are we going to go out and tell them, "Move your picnic tables, move your fire pits?" That are all in that nice big open space from the water to your house.
So I mean, I don't, I don't think you, you look out for something.
I don't think so.
And again, it's nothing we want to drag up something that's not a problem. We want to address it because really, we're ignoring a lot of it. We want to address it and say, "Yeah, we know it was an issue, we got rid of it, it's not a jurisdiction."
Well, I think the thing is is that...
educate your...
We're not ignoring it, we are discussing it and our best conclusion is, uh, it's not for us.
We can't afford to do it.
We, lots of reasons we can't, we cannot do it.
That's what everything boils down to.
Well, cost, we could afford to.
You think we could? Well, we could have to pay that.
If it had to, I mean, we, we could spend a week or so and just hit everything right on the shoreline, tag them, they don't move them, fines and penalties.
Fines and penalties, probably.
But that's, we always look for compliance, not fines and penalties. So quite often when we're bringing somebody through the process, such as the gentleman that had the bobcats out in the lake the other day, we just pushed it right to DEP. So, uh, I mean, that's something we could, we posted the dock worker, we shut him down. Uh, we could be twenty-five hundred dollars a day if we wanted to. And of course, he, he came right in and said, you know, "What's worst case scenario?" Well, worst case scenario is it's going to cost you thousands of dollars in fines and thousands of dollars to re-establish what was out there. You've got to put the muck back in the lake and revegetate it. So we'll let the DEP, who is also understaffed and overworked too as well, so. But we'll let them handle it.
Well, again, the TV station, I was loving this meeting, it was advertised that this is where you want to do your stuff.
That was, yeah, that was on television and that was...
Funny that is the lake that this issue I'm having is home in.
Well, that was...
We've got, uh...
A real faux pas.
No, I probably, TV and twenty retaining walls going on on all types of different lakes now.
Yeah, but that, that was a huge faux pas. This is a time you want to get out there and...
I mean, wasn't meant to be.
No, it was not. It was, it was just a...
Somebody like Demaslam was talking.
Keyword like Demaslam, it was not Demaslam. I will say that, let's keep that clear.
I remember when I was a kid, my uncles had camps on different lakes around the Augusta area. And I remember one thing they did every year, two of the uncles would take their motorboats.
Yeah.
Position them out and that'd be this long chain. And they would drag this chain to get all of the...
The muck and the scum.
Scum off so that they could have beach.
Yeah, yeah. So you get to maintain ten feet wide and you get to maintain that ten feet every year? But it can't be ten feet here, ten feet there, ten feet here.
They would remove the ten feet.
Oh, I know. It's a long chain. Chain's a good idea though, that's what I'm doing.
Well, actually, if you take a rake, turn it upside down so it's going this way. And you get in the water to your ankles where it's still kind of sandy. And you start walking up to the lake and you just keep pushing. It's going to look like a hall, whatever. And when you're done, and you can do this for about twenty feet, ten feet long, your grandkids won't complain about mucky bottoms because you've pushed it all the way out. We've done it more than once.
How about guy in those?
In the water, I don't know. Didn't think you tried that. I have had...
I suppose. Somebody had said something once.
Yeah, I had somebody come by with their jet ski one day and said, "I'll do that for you." Came in, turned his jet ski around and just blew it to the middle of the lake. And you can always tell when someone's pulling it out of the water.
Yeah, well...
It is quite an aroma.
It's all muck, yeah.
The muck.
Yeah, we had them mucking on Wilson earlier this year too.
It's, it sticks.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um, now we just push it back where it came from, it'll revegetate itself in the winter.
Yeah.
That's, that's it.
Uh, some of the areas again, the land use chat, it'd be great to get some public input on uses that they'd like to see on that chat. One of the things that we're also thinking is storage buildings, like any storages. Okay, we've allowed them in the past, newer ones. Or even, uh, storage buildings, uh, boat storage dock that we allowed. We had to navigate a bunch of things and connect a bunch of dots to legitimately say, you know, we can do that. First is just having it clear in the ordinance that, you know, up to four thousand square feet, forty by a hundred or something like that. Where it's, um, offshore land zoning around us, that's probably going to be a big need in the future, storage buildings.
Those are storage boxes as well, can't they?
Well, either that or one big building that you're storing things in.
Those are storage boxes seem like they're moving up.
Everywhere.
They're a lot more popular.
The state says that's how you can tell where there's wetlands. Look for the storage buildings.
Really?
Yeah. Because if there's ten feet of fill in or twenty feet of fill in, a lot of them, they always find portable, it's a villa.
Define a storage building.
Building where you store things.
Size.
Four hundred square feet would be forty by a hundred, which isn't that big. So eight hundred would be eighty by a hundred.
To me, that's not a storage building. It's an apartment building.
Well, that would be used for residential.
Yeah.
I found above these doors, the people are buying, uh, these metal ones.
Yeah. You know, they're... Little one here and a green one up there.
Yeah, they...
It'll be small.
Eight by twenty, uh...
Right, eight by twelve.
Units that you rent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You rent a lot of them, stuff like that. Yeah. I mean...
What's the use of them?
I don't have it as a permitted use.
Okay.
And if it's something the board wants to see used, um, so with that, you don't have anybody living in there. You don't have any need for public services.
Is this on personal property?
Yeah.
No.
Well, as I tell you, years ago, I remember there was quite a few old shop of all these storage buildings that people were putting up. And this one particular gentleman, um, got in a disagreement with the town over it. And he went and got an old school bus and made that into a storage building. They didn't have their junkyard ordinance then.
Yeah.
And, uh...
So I, I would be okay if it's somebody's personal storage. Yeah, I don't care, I think you build it. It's the commercial storage where you'd have a sign out front, storage, um, you know, similar to the two we have in town. And there's a few others that, you know, people bring boats and things like that that haven't gone through permitting process, been there forever type of things. So to me, I see that as a, a need in the community.
Is that one behind the motorcycle shop and Beadle Bayou, is it that?
That shop.
At Denver's shop, that shop.
Yeah.
So if we need something for a commercial buil- building, commercial use, we can do something about that.
Correct.
We can do something about that.
Yeah, once we get the foreword going, uh, something, just give you guys some thoughts to... Are the, you know, you hundred unit storage bills are the attractive? Not really, but you can place a bag, vegetate in front, um...
Only get two in town, right?
Two of those type. We have all types of others that, you know, ponds, people bring their boats for years, buildings and things like that. Other fairgrounds, they do a lot of storage and, and that's happened forever, so we will...
Looks like this dock can't be issued.
Either that or, um, or something else.
I was going to say the amusement parks is there this year.
Yeah, they probably get money for it. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Got them to show up for free this year or something, there's, there's some trade-off there and, um...
So you're saying that there's no permitted use for those?
We had to do a lot of dock, uh, dock connecting to come up with the dock business that we just permitted through with some storage inside. It would be much easier. So if an butter complains about it, we've got to start navigating these docks. So if it was in the ordinance that it's a permitted use, it's permitted. If the board says, "Yeah, we don't want those," then maybe we'll get it differently.
I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with a couple of units in New Hampshire that actually look like three-story office buildings.
That is the newer thing, especially the ponds now too. You just rent the pond and you put it up on the rack and you go and you want the rack down and things like that.
They, so they don't have to be these long, ugly...
Yeah.
I mean, I see, I saw them in Europe last month.
Yeah.
Multi-story buildings, just for storage.
Yeah.
And one had a great big false chain and padlock hanging in front of it.
Especially in Europe where you don't have as much land to store your own property like you around here. Uh, I would say most of your locals aren't going to pay to store things. Someways, they're going to put it out back, put a dock over it or something like that. It's going to be your seasonal people that have a five thousand square foot lot on the lake. And there is no place to store anything.
Right. Yeah. And in these places, well, you know, the, like the one I'm thinking of, electricity. You walk in the door, the light turns on.
Yeah.
You get so many feet down.
Yeah.
That light goes off and the next one comes on. So it's very...
So you're, you're talking more storage buildings, not those storage boxes.
Either one.
Either one.
Yeah.
I had heard years ago that those people that are building these storage unit businesses are doing it just for the tax loss because it's going to be a losing business.
The storage?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that was, uh...
I wonder if, maybe that's not true.
It's a very inexpensive building to build. Because it's just steel walls, a concrete slab, flab roof. Yeah, you, there's no utilities really in it, maybe there's a couple of lights here and there. Um, but they really, let's say, past twenty years really have stepped it up as far as gated entrances. You need a card to get in, certain hours to be in there and things like that. Paved all the way around.
Somebody on site.
Somebody on site, usually you can't take a building, whoever sees it. And it's nothing to see for five, six hundred units either.
Right.
If you've got a market in the area and a lot of them are all sold out. We've looked at a lot in the area here where individuals of command, obviously, they, they do their market analysis and research and determined there's a business. I know, uh, these two units are all sold out all the time, you're waiting, let's begin on these. So, uh, we, we've had inquiries with it, um, similar to herds of dwellings down there too. We've had individuals inquire about that as well too.
Well, I think it's something we should really take a little bit of time, um...
Have you heard any more who keeps going to do that?
Personal storage.
We should look into it, we should do that.
Other thing, I know we've talked fifty-five and older before. I'd, I'd like to see some, some mechanism to encourage a affordable fifty-five and older community somehow somewheres. But that really limits the location. Nobody's going to go up past Goat Hill, past the transfer station to stay. They're all looking for either a quick way to Rochester or Sanford as you get older. And what we've just seen over the past years, as people get older, uh, and they've lived in this community for, for several years, all their lives in some cases, there's no place for them to go. They don't need the farmhouse anymore, they don't need the house, they don't, they can't mow the lawns, they can't plow their driveways. It's becoming a burden.
They don't go into the lake anymore.
They don't go into the lake. So even the people that either whether they're there on the waterfront or at lots.
Right, they don't.
I mean, it's tough without getting into spot zoning to identify some places and say, "This parcel would be great for, um, more than a cluster, but comprehensive plan."
Yeah, comprehensive plan, I was reading this again and it, um...
Something, as you're getting at this age, you're leaning a thousand square feet of house and three thousand square feet of garage. You don't need two acres per house for dense... For density. You don't need a huge septic and well and lawns and things like that. At this point, you can really downsize that density. And that's what makes it affordable for developers, too. That they can go in and put in a loop road or something like that, and do fifty houses in a small area, and put the rest into conservation or something like that, but...
I think one of the issues we have, though, here, is, well, if we were talking closer to Rochester, maybe closer to doctors.
Yeah.
But older people, Medicare time, you know? You need to have the accessibility to, um, medical care. Um, you know, one way or another. If you have to drive half hour, twenty minutes for a doctor's appointment, or to get a prescription filled, you're gonna stop and think a couple of times. I mean, those are choices a lot of us have made.
Exactly, and that's if you still can drive.
Exactly.
Versus, uh, you know, a lot of the hospitals, and I don't know where Sanford's going, but Goodall's going. Oh, exactly, yeah.
You go to Bedford.
Yeah, so I mean, they're downsizing, but a community with bus trains to, to move things or people or something like that, but...
My understanding is attempting to transform Goodall into a, um, mental health.
I've heard that they're headed in that direction, yeah, for a lot of...
Yeah.
Probably, it, it's just like any...
Get it out of there.
Yeah, it's just like any business, where in that industry, uh, the baby business, they're probably not making money. Those are kids without insurance, there's no money. So all of a sudden, years ago, they started...
There is no obstetrics.
No.
There's none.
So years ago, then, then they went towards the cancer. A lot of money in cancer, those people have insurance, so we're getting, and you see, the, the, they're just really going for the older person, uh, replacement parts and things like that, is where they're really... 'Cause at the end of the day, they've gotta make money, and they're not gonna be open. They've gotta break even at least, or they can't make a business either.
I saw an interesting news thing last night that showed different parts of the country, that they don't have public-supported EMS service.
Yeah.
In rural areas.
Right.
Well, we have it in Anacton, though, in Tompah, right?
Yeah, that has just turned recently. That was a private organization.
When I came here, I was on the ambulances bus station twenty years ago.
So one of these, uh, rural communities have to do cake sales and like that.
Yeah, yeah.
EMS service.
Where I grew up, in New Hampshire, we did not have one. What we had was a very nice funeral wrecker.
Yeah, hearse.
Mr. Blondin was his name, Bob Blondin. And he, just like, I'm aging myself, the old TV shows where the guy would reach in, you know, put the blue light on the top of the police car. Mr. Blondin would put a red light on the top of the hearse, and he would pick you up in the hearse if you needed an emergency.
It'd be a little nerve-wracking if you didn't know.
Neighborhoods would empty. You know, if there were four houses on the street, it would empty. The phones would start ringing, but yeah, we used the hearse.
So we're progressing.
So we have progressed. In our town, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have progressed here. Well, don't forget, it's, it's only how many years it's been since we have more than a volunteer fire department.
Yeah.
Now, how many years has that been, now?
I don't know.
Not very many.
Steve was on first chief official, he, I, he, and he only served three years.
Right.
As, as we know, in this board, anything volunteer is a challenge these days.
Yes, it is a challenge, yes.
For it to be sued, an EMT is either going to court or going to court. Yeah.
But, you know, well, it's the old adage, no good deed goes unpunished.
No.
It really is.
Since we're talking storage buildings.
We go into cemeteries next?
No, I don't have cemeteries on the list.
Okay, well, you said storage.
I was thinking with, um, exempting from permitting, we don't have anything that's exempt from a permit. If you're building something, you need a permit. Having, um, structures to house animals up to X amount of square feet, I'm talking, you know, pigs and chickens and things like that, whatever, exempt from needing permits. Need-to-meet setbacks and things like that. Maybe eighty square feet a piece, you're allowed four of them that were there. It's just another thing we're not enforcing in the rural district, critical rural, things like that.
You're talking both from a point of having it in an ordinance and/or from, um, off the cuff decision on your part, on what to enforce and what not?
Well, we'll just be clearly exempt that you don't need a permit for your doghouse.
Oh.
You know, we're going...
Easy ones.
Easy ones, yeah. Eighty square feet, that's eight by ten, and it's made to ha- made to house animals. So your storage sheds wouldn't need it, or anything like that. Uh, you know, eight by ten, eighty square feet, four of them, needs to meet zones. So if you built it on your neighbor's property, they're gonna call and you're gonna have to move it. It would still need to meet a building code standard, just something with, uh... And that's something we, I had on my list last year and never got to it.
Building a doghouse seems kinda funny, Donovan, but years ago, the way the, can't remember when, but the way it was written out, you did need a permit for those doghouses.
We don't have it exempted now, so I would have to say. Well, you gotta call last week, how big of a doghouse can you build without a permit? And, you know, it's one thing to say something verbal, it's another thing when they want you to email it back. Because...
And that's extreme to me, you know?
Depends how big your doghouse is.
That's cool.
All of a sudden, you've got racks.
You've got a hundred and eighty pound dog.
Well, I'm thinking you've got ten dogs. And you're one of those bear hunters or coon hunters.
I'm just thinking you've got a hundred and eighty pound dog and a hundred and forty pound dog. They need space. I'm building a doghouse for my little Pomeranian. My shoebox isn't gonna bother you.
I was gonna say suitcase, but yeah.
But your, um, twenty by twenty for your two big dogs is a different matter.
Yeah. Again, something to think about, we'll bring it back up.
And again, not, not in Charlotte.
Yeah, no, no, in Beatty.
Charlotte, I was thinking.
So you're looking for something to be written down that would say the size and...
Is exempt.
No. The other thing, are we talking, what is it, hoof and fowl, or are we talking?
I'd say any animal.
That does take some thought.
Dogs don't have hooves.
No, they don't.
Like almost everything else does, though.
Yeah?
I mean, you gotta, you gotta be somewhat reasonable here. For example, like when the help was being the doghouse, that I really shouldn't be that uncomfortable.
Are you gonna have heat and air conditioning?
Well, I think I would.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and some people would have that for their dogs.
Yeah, they would, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, even the big cities are having to deal with it. Didn't I see where Portland had to do an ordinance for people with chickens?
Yes, I saw that, too.
Which, when we think chickens in a rural community, that means one thing, but we, we go into Portland, and you've got multiple, um...
People next door.
Ethnic, uh, communities that they came from where the chicken meat just hangs outside. You grab the chicken and cook it up. Uh, I saw that with, uh, we were in Portland a couple of months ago. It wa- I can't remember the name of the market, but that was very similar to that. And they just grabbed it and grilled it, and because that's what they use, so that's their everyday thing, so...
It's, it's part of the culture.
Part of the culture.
Yeah. And I learned yesterday on Facebook, that if you've got a bunch of chickens running around, you can corral them with a lawn rink.
Really?
Yeah.
Must be true if it's on Facebook.
Well, it was, it was right, it was right on... Right on the hopper row.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, so it's right line.
It was line, it was right on hopper row, so...
Always get a bunch of like ones down there.
I've seen the white ones.
Hey, I read it on the paper, so I know it's true.
Oh, you're all like, you're all...
Had to drive around one, yeah.
You gotta be careful in that area. Yeah. Another problem area, we've got bunkhouses. Uh, everyone in the shoreline zone wants a little room above their garage or a shed the kids can sleep in or something like that, so would be looking at a definition of, uh, rumpus sleeping with no water, something like that. Or the board to say absolutely not.
Give the kid a sheet, yeah, for a tent and a sleeping bed, and wish them well.
You could go to jail for that. You can't chew that, now, it is. Without a helmet and kneepack?
This is Comedy Central.
Oh, it's in, yeah.
All true.
I, I don't know. All right, so if you gave them a sheet, I'll go as far as a tarp. Give them a tarp and a sleeping bed, and wish them well.
Wish them well.
See them in the morning, maybe.
You're part of the greatest generation, weren't you?
Yes.
Ken, when I see you doing it, you're generating more and more work for the planning board.
No, I'm trying to eliminate it.
But we have to...
Trying to eliminate work for the zoning board. Well, once you have the ordinances in there, and it's much clearer for us, it is work for the planning board to either put a definition in.
Yeah.
And allow it as a permitted use.
But once it's done, then it's clear.
Then it's done.
Exactly. Well, and then you look at it as, similar to the contractor yards, it's something we can permit. First, something you can do without any permits, a level that you need a permit for, and a level that you have to come to the planning board. So, a lot of people, I, I've seen where this has gone in other communities, and everybody was up on arms, are you trying to stop this? And it's like, no, right now, you're not allowed to do it at all. We want to permit it, because without contractors in this community, um, a lot of people, that's their jobs, and everybody needs those services, so we just either wanna permit it right across the board with no regulation, or permit it with some, or just be clear again, when we have a full board that, uh... Yeah, no, it's not a permitted use. Keep the ordinance how it is.
Yeah, I think that it, that has to be our goal. You know, the clarity, and it's a yes or an, or, yes or no's are so hard, but it's permitted or it's not permitted.
Yeah.
And, uh, would there be hardship exemptions in any of these? It's a discussion we'd have to have beforehand.
Yeah, we'd have to look at what's out there, how long they've been out there.
Exactly.
They were there before zoning, so they're grandfathered, legal existing, non-conforming.
Yeah, they, they're legal, let's not call them grandfathers.
Yeah.
We're gonna have grandfathers coming in here, you know?
Yeah.
But they are, they are legally exempt.
Yeah.
From, from, um, from anything.
We have a lot of grandfathers in this town.
I know. I know. And that would be the first thing.
Well, how do you guys deal with it? Where somebody wants to do something, they have the...
Aegus Trace?
Yeah, if, if, if it's permitted by the town.
We have our own covenants, rules, bylaws that we have to go by. In fact, we're reviewing the bylaws right now, committing to doing that, again, to try to simplify it.
Yeah, 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 it's permitted or it's not. 'Cause you guys have the fifty-five and older clause that you guys have down there, and it's... Somebody died, got remarried, and now he's younger than it was, or, um, all of a sudden, somebody ended up with their grandkids, and they've gotta watch their grandkids, and then full-time resident, so you guys have a lot of issues down there.
We had an issue a couple of years ago where one of the rental houses had a...
Rental houses?
Well, they called, it's owned by David.
Yeah.
That rental house that they owns, he rents it out, and it was like...
And the number, street number is...
And there was a resident there with a child.
Yeah, yeah.
And what, what do we do? It's, it's part of our rules.
Oh, exactly.
So we have...
And once somebody complains, now you have to look at it.
Then what do you do, though?
We have to leave.
And if they said no?
They did. They didn't say no.
No, I, I don't, you know what I mean, I understand, you know, the theory, but I...
The association would take the individual to court.
Take them to court.
Civil, civil court. It's funny, because any of our permits that go up to the fifty-five and older, that's one of our conditions right on it. Any permit in a subdivision that says you're gonna be in compliance with subdivision covenances, we don't usually enforce no goats and chickens, no metal roof, no vinyl siding, no modular homes. We don't enforce that. The fifty-five and older, though, there was a planning board condition on that, and it used to be 'cause they were exempt from growth permits, 'cause that was huge for us to keep an eye on.
Right.
Now it's not, now you still need growth permits for fifty-five and older.
You know, one of the things that I did a double take on, reading this for the third time, but it hit me more fourth time, was the affordable housing and putting aside areas for mobile homes, which...
That used to have a bad connotation, is what you're saying.
It did. And I think mobile homes are not really the same as manufactured homes.
Right.
They, they are, mobile home is a older term from the eighties, manufactured is what they call now.
But I'm...
Modular homes are the stick-built ones.
Okay, then I would say, mobile homes, to me, you have a fire in one house, you have a fire in all twenty, 'cause they go up like that. Modular homes, that's the stick-built one. To me, that's a different cap altogether.
Yeah.
Still affordable?
Depends.
No.
No.
They're, they're, they're not even cheaper, 'cause they have to meet the same, uh, standards as a stick-built house. Snow loads, well, almost.
Yeah, you buy them in two thousand, three thousand, four thousand square feet.
Oh, yeah, for, we've got a four-unit box where you gotta put our four boxes together, you know? Going in now, they just, um, started, yesterday they did four.
But with that being said, the mobile homes are, are built a lot different.
They are built to a HUD standard.
And they didn't use...
They're built to HUD standard.
Yeah.
But look at the HUD trailers.
The seventies?
No, uh, well, maybe they were, that were in New Orleans after.
Hurricane.
From the hurricane. I mean, people were sick.
Those, those are campers, actually.
There are a lot of campers there, but a lot of people, uh, most of the manufactured housing comes out of Pennsylvania, there is some out of Maine and things like that. But a lot of the people we had after Hurricane Katrina that had a manufactured home on order, the trailers, they couldn't get them, 'cause the government said everything's going south. Nothing goes north when you lose the factory, 'cause the housing was so depleted down there, they had to get those back up and running. Um, but you used to be able to tell the manufactured home, 'cause you went in the basement, and there were, you know, eye beams in there, and axles and things like that, but now they're actually making them foundation-ready. So it's just the different standard they're built from.
Yeah.
But in the, in the sixties and the seventies, anyway, you take one of those manufactured homes, and what you had, uh, especially if you built farther south, you had your aluminum siding, you had it finished two by two.
And... To a distance of insulation.
Uh, unfaced.
Yeah.
And then you had the strap, and you know, this way, and that was kind of out of the two by two. And then they took glue on the paneling like this, and put it up there, and that's what held the insulation up. And then they put a few, them little nails in it, and that was your wall.
And that's why God didn't like them in our caves.
And that's why he, he talked, made the buying one from, uh, John Wychell. When Gail and I first got married, and you get up in the morning in the wintertime, and half the living room on the inside would be white.
Frost.
Frost.
So what we were looking at here, when you said affordable...
So we'll go back a few, yeah.
How, how do we...
Uh, they all have standards they need to be going through, just to come into the state of Maine, if you're talking manufactured or modular. Uh, when I was thinking affordable, I was looking at zoning regulations to shrink lot size down possibly for a, uh, the old fifty-five and older communities are sixty-two and older now. For some reason, I mean, they've changed those numbers around, just to keep me out.
You think you have it, isn't it?
Something depends.
Or even less.
You know, especially if you encourage, I call it city water city storage, it's just a community well it's just a community well and community, you can shrink them down dramatically, the lot size.
Cleanrizing, what was it, the sewerage?
It's no different than the campground, we just permitted, that was fifty-six units up there.
Right.
City water, city sewerage, all coming down into one thing. You know, it's a community-based thing. He's got two wells on there, or three wells, two septals.
Three wells and two septals.
Yeah, so.
So that's what you're really talking about, something like that, the community water and community set.
So that the town is effectively encouraging a development to do...
And the town itself is doing it, the developer's doing it.
The developer would have to do it.
If the economy's great, I mean, there's triggers in there that these developers know, whether it's federal money they're getting to build it, or they've gotta have at least, you know, either a single building that holds thirty units in it for it to even be feasible financially, or they're doing X amount of houses on slab-type constructions, heated slabs, small buildings. Basically, it's affordable. Again, somebody's gotta make money, and nobody's gonna do it.
It's most, kinda like a school, you know, you get this huge building, I mean, there are a bunch of little ones, but you've got, you know, three hundred people, four hundred people a day in there. And it's all fed by a single water system and this...
A single source.
Sewerage system.
Yeah, yeah.
So what would the town do if you had a developer who didn't know what he was doing and was destined to pay you?
Oh, boy.
We would probably blow on the project, if you guys would be looking for an escrow or something like that. Usually, we'll do that with subdivisions, and it triggers when permits are required. If certificate of occupancies, you guys may hold it to, we want the road in, we want the road paved, we want all the pins in, we want all these conditions met, and you're all set. Or if you want certificate of occupancies and all these permits, we wanna blow on. Because we've been lucky enough, I think I've only had one subdivision that, you know, in '06, that kinda imploded, and we had houses out there, and we couldn't find property lines and things. The pins didn't get in because he didn't pay the survey and the engineering. Some road issues were there and stuff. But the key is it really is to find a site that would be suitable.
For?
Some sort of a community development.
Community development, fifty-five affordable.
Ideally, it would be a sand pit that needs to be reclaimed.
Oh, I know where they're at, too.
In a desirable location. Now we're getting close.
Close to a public launch.
Yeah, yeah.
One just opened, we'll close it back.
But if there's still sand in the pit, then there's more money in the gravel.
Then there isn't houses, absolutely.
Yeah.
We gotta think about every truckload that goes out.
Yeah. I mean, the first part would be encouraging zoning that would attract something. And then when somebody came in, then you could go through, you know, in lieu of taxes for this, this would be it, or something like that, that the selectmen would be involved in.
A lot of that happens in bigger cities.
Yeah.
An awful lot. And the trickle-down is incredible.
Yeah.
It...
Have the ability to change the zoning to adapt to development.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, Sandy did that years ago, and Bolworth and stuff was still around when they put in that business spot. It was a big negotiation, having these companies, giving incentive to come there. Sandy was a pretty big employer there.
Yeah, it depends on what the poll is. Is it industry, is it something else?
I mean, we've always thought commercial businesses are great, you know, the larger facilities, but all of a sudden, if you've got a facility that hires a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred people, well, then they need housing, they have kids, and they have to put additions on the school, and hire more staff, and, I mean, so it goes both ways. You've got a great tax basis, but then you have a lot of housing, your housing spikes.
Right.
We're living at two out of thirty-five a year, so...
And then everybody gets old, and you have a school too big for the town.
And you need more EMTs.
You need more EMTs, well, hopefully those kids you brought up.
Now we're EMTs, and we actually do have a couple of them.
And we do, I know.
I've seen those younger kids.
That's what I've said, I've met, yeah.
Yeah, he's actually building a house now, so it's expectant.
They stick around.
Go through the system and stick around, that's the hardest thing, is to get them to stick around.
Yeah. Okay, on our ordinances, one thing, I did not bring the letter with me. Rewarding on the forestry.
Yeah.
The letter we got, I wanna get, I would like to get that done, so that...
That was the definition, right?
The definition.
Was it the forest roads, I think it was forest roads or something like that?
I apologize, I didn't bring the letter with me when I took my stuff.
What definition?
It was definition.
I think we just need to strike out more.
Okay.
And what keeps happening is, we talk with somebody in the state, this is all they want, we go through, we get it all set, we send it to the state, and that person's not there anymore.
Exactly.
Now this new person wants this, so we're in a third cycle of it.
Yeah.
We're down to just one thing, so.
Yeah.
We're looking good.
But let's get it done.
Yeah.
Let's get it done so we can, so we can send it upstairs and, you know, if we can get a half a dozen other ones done, I'd be happy. We basically have three months to get these things done. I know, I believe Gavin has a couple of things he'd like to bring up, so we're gonna have to spend a little bit of this kind of time.
I think his subdivision regs.
Some in the subdivision regs, but there are a couple other things.
And I think, since we're talking subdivision rights, we only had four people show up at the last planning board meeting for the subdivisions, so do you think we can move back down again?
I would love to move back down.
Me, too.
Worst-case scenario...
Okay, Virginia has a vote, Virginia has a vote.
And if it's a bigger crowd, I did put chairs in my budget last year, and you gave me the Houston's friendship. Fight Department has a great stack system with the thing that you put it in. Just trying to find something like that'd be great to, I mean...
I just, I just want to...
The zoning board meeting, we had it set up differently, we had over fifty people in it.
Right, right. And if we set it up differently, again, this falls under, nobody likes change, including us. If we set it up differently, I mean, I'm looking there at Virginia right now. In Virginia, I see three chairs to your right, and I see five chairs to your left. And perhaps, so when I was in school, that made eight chairs, so. And then I see another eight, four and four, sixteen, and we can put one more in.
Oh, we can do twenty...
Twenty-four, twenty-five, easy.
Yeah. The problem is, we don't have a good, I don't know whether metal chairs keep disappearing, they're upstairs, and the green chairs, we're supposed to be from upstairs.
Well, there we go, we've had an Eagles Trace meeting in here a little bit, and there was plenty of chairs.
But they just disappear.
They go upstairs.
They go upstairs.
They can log across the street.
They've got their own, they've got a nice rack system of halfway decent chairs to sit in, but I think they bought for cheap money, so I would keep trying my eye, keep an eye out for used stuff. The animal rescue league, that could generate some people to show up too, but...
I think the only thing we have to look at in the future is public hearings may have to be someplace else. And I'm just gonna use the term someplace else.
Depends on the, I mean, most people don't come out when they're in support of something.
No, exactly.
Yeah, it sounds good to me, I'll be, it's no, no way.
Yeah.
And that's when that brings them out, so.
Yes, way.
Yes.
But I think that's the only thing we have to look at. And then we have to decide, because I frankly find upstairs lacking.
I'm lost, I'm missing, you know, I think I lug everything up I need and want and have, and first instance, I lost my, didn't bring up my cheat sheet or my guides, or...
Right, right. And to be able, not to be able to really show on this wall what we want to show.
Right, and that's some of the public is looking for, they'd love to be able to follow along, such as a subdivision, and it's like, well, I'd have to print things for, and I don't know how many people are showing up.
Right, exactly.
They're charged to print, or they could ask the applicant to bring things, but...
Right, exactly, exactly. You know, and...
Well, another workshop anyways before another meeting, we've got five Thursdays this month.
Right. So, I mean, I think that we should just agree that Virginia's executive decision would be to meet down here.
Yeah, and worst-case scenario, if all of a sudden, somebody did come out of the woodwork for just a regular planning board night, we'll can help Virginia set up if we need to.
Yeah. Virginia, do you have a new chair yet?
I have one there that's good enough.
That's a frugal taxpayer.
That wasn't the question.
What was the question?
Did you have a new chair?
No, I don't have a new chair. That's okay, we're using a chair that's, it's okay.
My grandfather used to tell me, kids can sit next to it enough for that. That's your mentality, they usually have to. You know, at least have something, huh?
All right. Does anyone, including Dawn, have anything they'd like to bring forward? Say, Dennis? Leslie did send me an email, she's working most of this week in Boston, and... That's why she's not here. And of course, we know Yoli's working and Gavin's working. So...
Not getting my last meeting, I'd like to say, it's been great.
Last meeting?
Yeah.
I thought you were just going on vacation for a couple of meetings.
I just gave her my resignation letter.
The one I threw away.
I haven't seen nothing. He gets the donor.
The, we're gonna miss you. You've been a great addition.
I'll be paying attention, though.
Please, please.
There'll be two hits on the...
What you're doing.
Yeah.
You and Chip, they have two hits on you.
And the Horns, the Horns sisters watch us.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Good for them.
They watch us every week. But you've been a great addition. I know Christina's gonna miss you terribly with your notes. She thinks you're the best member we've had in a long time. I don't know what she thinks of the rest of us, but...
I get pretty good idea.
Yeah, me too.
Me, too.
But we've all been a miss, your input has been invaluable. I always remember kind of early on, you said something, Dennis, I'm sure you remember too, about smaller words, less encumbrances on the words. And not using words like encumbrances, using smaller words and being very precise in what you want to say. And that has stuck with me, I was there.
The army taught me that.
The army taught you that, wow, there you go, there you go, thank you.
We'll see you at the Christmas party.
See you.
On Christmas, end of the year party?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
That's what we do best now at Eagles Trace, we are partners.
Sounds like a plan to me.
One from another to another.
Are you inviting the planning board to your party? We just invited you ours, so...
You know, Bob Smith?
Yeah.
He and his wife do for us every year, all on their own, a harvest dinner, and invites all the way to those trays.
Wow.
And they do all the cooking, all the serving, and it's a wonderful thing to go to. Otherwise, we have, you know, bring their own.
Right, right. Well, you are welcome, if you want, on the third Tuesday of the month, to come to meet apples and have dinner with us. We meet every, the third Tuesday of the month. Yesterday, we had a roast beef dinner and birthday cake.
It's birthday cake.
It's for...
And where is it?
Right upstairs. We usually have about three people, so, anyway, but thank you, Virginia.
Okay, is the meeting?
You can commit, we're done.
Okay, all righty.
And...
Can I read my name, too?